Call to order, first, uh, roll, uh, order of business, we have a form, if we can get a roll call, please.
Alderman Boyd, present. Commissioner Cohen, not present. Uh, Commissioner Bannan?
Present.
Commissioner Boas?
Present.
Commissioner Bradley?
Present.
Commissioner Conway?
Present.
Commissioner Peoples?
Present.
Commissioner Reese? Not present. Commissioner Vine? Not present. And Commissioner Young?
Present.
And Chair Strider?
Present.
And you have a form?
Very good, thank you. With that, before we go on to the next one is the approval of minutes. And the minutes that were sent out to you in the middle of last week, hope you've had a chance to review them, I will entertain a motion to approve change of orders. We move to second it, if we can have approval, Alderman's vote, please, Dave.
Alderman Boyd, abstaining. Uh, Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway? Abstaining. Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Staying.
And Chair Brother?
Approve. And it does pass five ayes and three abstentions. Okay, very good. With that, uh, I want to first just welcome back to you, back, who's, you know, who's been gone on us, but we're glad to see your face. And then Don, we'll let Don have an opening signal at this point.
Sounds so official. It's, I just want to extend the courtesy that we have some visitors from the Cosco neighborhood, um, and they've been with us in the past. Uh, there's an item that we have tabled, it's noted on your agenda that it's on the table. Uh, I believe there's a consensus that it would not be something that would be taken off the table tonight. Uh, and so with that, as a courtesy, I think we should extend that, you're welcome to stay, uh, but with that information, you might feel like to prefer not to stay.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, fair.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. We, we, we always want to give you the opportunity to understand that. We have a loaded agenda, obviously, as you can tell, we have a loaded room, too. So, we're gonna keep Don to ninety, I mean, uh, limited time, as usual, but the first item of business, both of the items will be Roman, uh, who will carry our first few items.
Mr. Chairman, then, Commissioner.
And this is seventy nineteen?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, um, this is a proposed rezoning of a single parcel, um, four twenty-three Lynch Street, uh, on the K unrestricted district to the J industrial district. The, uh, the site that's highlighted there in black is about, uh, almost seven acres in size, it's located on a, uh, city block, uh, founded by Sydney on the north, Third Street on the east, Lynch Street on the south, and Seventh Street and Seventh Boulevard on the west. It's located in the Koski-Usco neighborhood, uh, generally where, uh, many of the Anheuser-Busch complexes, facilities are located. The, uh, existing use is a large office building, um, that includes a, uh, branch credit union on the first floor and a large parking lot. Uh, that facility is owned and occupied by the Anheuser-Busch Employee Credit Union, which recently relocated to that facility from a few blocks away, uh, west of, along Lynch Street there. The petitioner would like to consolidate, uh, this parcel, four twenty-three, uh, Lynch Street, with an adjacent parcel, uh, twenty-seven hundred South Broadway, located here at the corner, uh, which is Zone J, and, uh, due to the fact that the city regulations don't allow any parcel consolidation to occur for parcels that have different zoning districts, the petitioner is requesting a rezoning. And, uh, this parcel consolidation was actually required by the Board of Adjustment, uh, a few months or so ago, as a condition, uh, for granting a variance to the petitioner, allowing them to construct a ground sign on this particular parcel. So, they're being required to do this by the, the Board of Adjustment, and they're going through that procedure currently. The, uh, petitioner is Civil Engineering Design Consultants, civil engineering firm that's representing the, uh, credit union. Becky Tony is, is here tonight, and, uh, she'll be available for any questions you may have. So, the, uh, parcel in question is highlighted there in red, as you can see, it's an odd-shaped parcel, it's subdivided many, many times, um, it's, uh, Broadway used to cut through here at one point in time. This is the office building here, it has an extensive parking lot, um, and then there's a, on the ground floor is the, uh, is the credit union. The adjacent parcel here at the corner of, of Lynch and Broadway basically includes, uh, some ATM facilities and some, a small number of, of parking spaces. And as you can see, uh, both to the north, east and to the west, there's lots of parking facilities, tractor trailers and things of that nature, uh, serving, uh, the Anheuser-Busch complex. So, this is the existing zoning map for the city, and as you can see, the site is Zone K, um, unrestricted, which is shown in this dark gray. The parcel that is to be consolidated with it is, is, um, is Zone J, um, industrial district. Two different zoning districts, um, and again, since, uh, we can't consolidate parcels, uh, with different zoning districts, uh, this is why the rezoning petition is before us tonight. This is a photograph of that office building, it's, uh, about four stories, hundred twenty-five thousand square feet, uh, used to be, uh, occupied by AB's engineering department. Uh, again, the credit union moved into that facility after about a five million dollar renovation project, um, and, uh, has a pretty fancy, uh, branch credit union. Uh, these are some, uh, different shots of that facility, uh, looking in different directions, again, this odd-shaped lot facing three different streets. Uh, these are some photographs of twenty-seven hundred South Broadway, the adjacent parcel. Uh, on the left, we're looking northward, and you could perhaps barely make out some of the ATM facilities, um, on, on the premises. To the north is a vacant office building, was once, uh, occupied by Anheuser-Busch, and as a result of their downtime, you can see that some of the parcels around the complex are a little more underutilized than they once were. This building is currently for sale, and it's possible that the credit union may purchase that parcel in the future. Uh, to the north is a large truck terminal, uh, on that same block is a, another Bush facility, um, and just to the east is a, uh, industrial operation owned by Alstom. To the south and southwest is one of those large, uh, parking lots, and to the southwest is the, uh, the corporate headquarters for AB. Uh, this is the, uh, city strategic land use plan, which designates the, uh, rezoning site as a business industrial preservation area, which generally encourages, uh, the retention of both industrial, um, firms as well as general businesses, so clearly an office building fits into that realm. Uh, in terms of comments, the, uh, proposed rezoning would achieve three objectives, according to the zoning administrator. Um, as you saw, uh, the rezoning is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, and staff is recommending approval. Are you happy to answer any questions? And Ms. Tony of, of Civil Engineering Design Consultants, the petitioner, is also available.
All right. Well, first we'll ask, we'll offer the opportunity to, Becky, if you want to say anything at this side, or wait for the fun part of it?
No, I think, I'm just doing my own thing. I'll be answering any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Bradley, any questions? Commissioner Young? Mr. Peoples?
No questions.
Commissioner Boyd?
No questions.
Commissioner Bannan?
Uh, did you say what, what you're wanting to do with the, the new site that you're annexing? Was it just the?
You said that the parcel that they're consolidating with now?
Yeah.
The parcel that they're consolidating, putting the sign on, currently has, they currently own it, and it currently has the, um, ATM and the few parking lots on it.
Okay. So, just continued with that use, but with the added sign?
Yes.
Got it.
No further questions. Commissioner Melwitt?
Mr. Ben Boyd?
With that, there is a seeming to be no other questions discussion, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Moving to move. Second.
The second it. Both, please.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Chair Strider?
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Move on to the next step for that class of, Roman?
Okay, okay. So, this is the, uh, second rezoning item. Um, this is a rezoning of five parcels, and the addresses are listed, uh, at the top of the slide there, they're located on Bruno Avenue and Forest Avenue, um, in the, uh, Franz Park neighborhood, and the proposal is to, uh, resell those parcels from the A single-family dwelling district to the C multiple-family dwelling district. The, uh, the site is a little over, a little over one acre in size, as you can see, it's located along Forest Avenue here, between Waldemar and, uh, Manchester Avenue in the Franz Park neighborhood. Uh, the existing uses, um, it's a little difficult to make out here, but there's a small detached two-family building here at the north end of the site, a, uh, a large building with, uh, two attached single-family units here, and then two vacant lots, this large one here and a very tiny one, uh, immediately to the south there. The, uh, petitioner would like to consolidate those five parcels into one, and then subsequently re-subdivide them for the, uh, development of twenty-one for sale, uh, attached townhouses. The petitioner is Trinity Investments, and the developer, uh, is Trinco, thank you, which is a, um, related firm. We have some guests here tonight, Derek Onstop is with Trinity Investments, the, uh, petitioner, you may want to raise your hand, Derek. Uh, Mark Kelly is with Trinco, and Matt Marskey is with Midwest Engineering. Um, so this is an aerial photo of the site, and as you can see, it's sort of an, um, odd-shaped, uh, collection of parcels. Um, I, I ran down what the existing uses are, uh, to the immediate north, are primarily some single-family, uh, uses, there's a twelve-family apartment building here, there's a couple of, uh, more dense, uh, townhouse units here that were created by, uh, the streets. I see Mark Salmon here in the audience, uh, who's involved with the construction of one of those, and maybe both of those will, as part of, uh, the PUV overlay zoning process. So, that's a little bit denser than what we see, um, in other parts. Uh, to the east here along Benton Terrace is, uh, again, this twelve-family, there's some single families as well, the four-family. To the south along Manchester Avenue is a mix of commercial and mixed uses, and, uh, to the west here along Forest Avenue, were primarily single-family uses, but also a fairly significant, uh, size, uh, structure. So, this is an existing zoning map for the, uh, for the site, as you can see, uh, Manchester Avenue, both to the north and south of the street is, um, either J industrial or K unrestricted. Immediately to the north, uh, virtually the entire neighborhood is Zone A, single-family dwelling district. Again, uh, townhouses are not allowed in the A, single-family dwelling district, um, and that's why the, uh, petitioner has requested a rezoning, uh, that would allow, uh, the construction of, of twenty-one townhouses on that. So, this is a photo, uh, looking northeast toward the entire site, and it really doesn't capture everything, but, uh, and this is somewhat obscured by the row of trees here along, uh, Forest Avenue, uh, but you can see there is a slope going downward towards Manchester Avenue, slope increases as you get, uh, located further south, stretches over here and, uh, goes out as far east as the corner of that building. Um, in terms of the individual parcels themselves, uh, they include the, the small two-family building shown on the left there, uh, this small vacant lot here, which really functions as a, a private street at this point, I guess it serves, uh, some of the existing residents here, as well as the, uh, the businesses along Manchester Avenue. This is the, uh, the large vacant lot that fronts on to, um, Forest, I'm sorry, yeah, to Forest Avenue, uh, as you can see, you've got the topography change here, and it's particularly noticeable here when you're looking, um, northward. The, uh, the building there is a former institutional building, uh, that was converted into a, uh, a townhouse structure with two units on it, so it's two, two separate parcels. Uh, in terms of adjacent, uh, properties to the north is that twelve-unit apartment building and six single-family buildings. To the east along Benton Terrace, uh, some single families and four families, uh, on the south are the commercial and mixed-use buildings I referenced on Manchester, and to the west is the Prince of Peace Apostolic, uh, Gospel Church and a small single family. This is an architectural rendering that was submitted by the petitioner, uh, at our request, uh, with a couple of caveats. Uh, one, uh, this particular building showed only two units, as opposed to the, uh, the buildings, uh, that are proposed under this development project, which would have six, uh, seven, or eight units, uh, as part of it. And secondly, from what I understand, uh, while these units show a one-car garage, the proposed units would, would have, uh, two-car garages. So, we're not exactly looking at what's being proposed, but that's what was submitted. This is a, uh, preliminary subdivision plat that was submitted along with the petition, and, uh, just to orient you, this is Forest Avenue here, uh, Manchester is down here, and, uh, you can see these lots here, so there are seven lots here where seven townhouses would be constructed along Forest Avenue, eight townhomes would be built on the south, and six townhomes would be built here. The areas, uh, in the crosshatches would be the interior drives that would provide access to, to the individual units. Um, one of the issues that I, uh, raised in the, uh, in the planning commission resolution is, uh, inconsistency in, in speaking with the petitioner as to whether these seven units here would be facing Forest Avenue, uh, in other words, their, the front, uh, of the buildings would be facing Forest, or if it would be the rear yards, uh, that would be facing Forest Avenue, and, uh, got a couple of different answers, so I, we've asked the, um, petitioner to clarify that tonight. Um, the, the other, uh, area concerning, and, uh, I gather there's been a fair number of neighborhood meetings about this development project, um, that have been attended by the alderman, and the alderman does support this, this rezoning. So, what I'd like to point out is, so this is the rezoning site, I made reference earlier to the, uh, Dogtown Walk Townhouse subdivision, which is this general area. That development includes twelve townhouse units, it's a collection of four three-unit buildings, and the second phase of that project is, uh, Dogtown Walk Two, uh, has ten detached uh, family units. So, you can see that you've got twelve units here and ten units here, nineteen may be a little more, uh, dense than, than what's happened before. Now, that's, you know, uh, something that can be worked out with the neighborhood group. Certainly, if the rezoning is allowed, the, uh, the C zoning district would allow not only three units, but actually more than twenty-three units. So, that's just a concern that, that's raised. Um, these are some photos of, of Dogtown Walk Townhouse, so, uh, this is looking into the development. Uh, again, it's four three-unit buildings, and this is one of those buildings that has the, the three units. And this is a photograph of the, the other, uh, second phase of that Dogtown Walk subdivision, which has the, the ten single-family units, and this is just one of those single-family units. Um, in terms of the, uh, city strategic land use plan, the entire site, as well as much of the northern stretch of, of Manchester, is, uh, is designated as a neighborhood commercial area, which primarily, uh, encourages just commercial uses. I think part of the problem here is with Manchester, um, cutting through the neighborhood and all sorts of different configurations as to how streets intersect with Manchester, it was difficult to draw a line where you end the commercial and, uh, the residential. But in any case, um, the planning commission, if it chooses to, can, can find this development project to be in conformity with the, uh, strategic land use plan by being used of what we call the adjacency rule, which basically says that if a development project is allowed in an adjacent, uh, strategic land use category, uh, then it, then it's fine. In this case, uh, immediately across the street from, uh, the zoning site is a area designated as a neighborhood preservation area, which encourages residential, uh, preservation as well as infill development. Um, I think we could go ahead and use that if, if the planning commission chooses to do so. So, the, uh, proposed rezoning of the, uh, the parcel would achieve four objectives, according to the zoning administrator, a couple, one, a couple I'd like to point out in particular, would create some additional new housing opportunities in the immediate area, and the third one is that it would provide for a transition between that, uh, area, uh, that's zone for single-family, um, uses, as well as the, uh, industrial uses to the south. Again, the, uh, rezoning is in conformity with the, uh, city strategic land use plan, staff is recommending approval, uh, with a couple of concerns.
Okay, thank you. There were four gentlemen listed, we'll pick one to be their spokesman and, and provide anything that needs to be shared.
Yes, sure. Hi, I'm Mark Kelly, I'm with the development, uh, and, so I guess I would, I would clear up the question that Roman you had about the, the facing of the units on Forest Avenue, and the, uh, it might be easier for your board, but I think this was the original one here, the question was, on these on Forest, where do they face? And the front doors would face Forest, the driveways and backdoors would be dressed up, would face on to our subdivision street on this side. So, for all purposes, we're gonna dress this building up on both sides as if they both had good curb appeal. The units over here, inside of the subdivision and along the Manchester roadside, would be, the front doors would be into the subdivision, and the garage doors would be into the subdivision. So, that would be the only one that would be the, the difference where you would be able to walk, you know, out to Forest on your front door, but you would not have the, the garage driveway on that side, that would be on the back of the house. So, I wanted to clear that up, 'cause there was totally confusion, and I apologize for that one.
I should point out that in talking with, uh, not only with the former, um, alderman for this area, um, and his discussions with the current alderman for that area, as part of some neighborhood meetings, uh, neighborhood residents felt strongly that the, uh, home's, uh, front facade should be facing Forest Avenue, and that's one of the reasons why that was brought up in the resolution.
Yes, and then there were two different meetings with the Franz Park Homeowners Association, both got the support, there was one formal one at the school, and, uh, and that got everyone's unanimous support as well.
Okay. There were, let's just go to the Bradley questions.
Um, just a couple of questions, not with the rezoning, but the two interior streets that are being proposed, those are private?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so, will they be constructed as fitting standard?
Yes, they will.
And then, will you do your utility feeds via a utility easement, and then be owned by the utilities, or would those be private utilities maintained by the homeowners association?
I would ask Matt, my engineering administrator.
I would hope that we, you public utilities, that would be all, okay.
Assuming they're all constructed, yes.
Right, okay.
And the homeowners association would be responsible for the maintenance of those structures.
That's correct. Thank you. You bet.
Mr. Young?
Nothing at all.
Mr. Beasley?
Nothing at all.
Uh, Commissioner Boyd?
Uh, just a comment, I think it's an interesting, um, design, I was just noticing the architectural landscape, and it just seemed to be a potpourri of housing. There was no consistency in, in the housing stock, which was quite interesting, um, so this kind of just fits right on in with random housing. And I don't say in a bad way, you know, but it's, it's, I'm used to neighbors arriving down the street and the houses kind of look alike or feel like, you know, as if they took some time to kind of make everything kind of fit, so it's kind of interesting. Um, I remember when they were building the ones off of, that's Bruno, and I thought that was kind of interesting, how they did that. I'm not a big fan of garages on the front, at all. Um, but, but to be clear...
The other garages all face the interior of the subdivision.
Except for the ones on...
It's like an alley.
Well, the interior is the front door for the...
The front door's on the street, you said.
Not on half of it.
Well, that would be on just Forest, which is the main road as you come up to the garage alley.
Yes. Front door's here, front door's here.
Wow.
And garages and driveways on the interior only, so nothing out over the road, giving it more of a city feel or, or style of what's already there.
Let me just make sure I'm clear, sir. The interior, their garage doors on both sides, oh, every, all the garage doors faces the interior.
That's correct.
Okay. And, what's the other street to the right?
That's an alley, that's an alley.
That's an alley, so, their front door faces an alley? No.
No.
Their, their model would be...
Front door and garage door face.
That's right, oh, yeah. So, the ones going this way and that way, both the front doors and the garage doors face.
On the ones that have the front door facing Forest, it's going to be, the garage door's there naturally, but we also visioned that door being dressed up with a porch over it and being just as nice as you come around, it could be, you could call it a front and a front, not, not to be, like you're coming around and the neighbors looking out of the front, looking in the back of the house, in this instance, we'll be dressing the whole thing on both sides.
Well, it sounds like you put a lot of good thought in it, I appreciate that. No further questions.
Mr. Benton?
First, uh, question for Roman, you mentioned that we need to go through this because townhomes aren't allowed in the single-family zoning district, correct? But it seems like the other two that you pointed out were within the single-family zoning district.
Yeah, they, they were both allowed, uh, in the, in the development district overlay.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's how they were both allowed.
Okay. Um, question for the development team, who is your architect for this project? Do you have one?
We do, I, I design everything myself, I've built over three thousand homes, about twenty-five, twenty-seven subdivisions, and nine of them were multi-family. So, we don't know exactly what we're getting with our zoning, so we don't really go forward and follow the plans.
Yeah.
We go a lot for changes as we, as we move forward. Um, but will you kind of be architecturally correct, try to bring in some of the old, original ideas, and tie them in with what works with building today? Um, I'm not a fan of modern or contemporary in this situation.
Yeah.
Um, and neither's our group at all. Um, we're, we're more in tune with tying in, you know, being something that's gonna look like it's been there for a while, and tying in with the look of the field, and it is tough to tie in with what those houses really, because there is so many, but...
I'm curious, in that, in your neighborhood meetings, was there any discussion about the materiality of this?
Yeah, there was, yeah, they all had brought up to that same exact question, wanted to know what we, our thoughts were, and our thoughts were, to have an original city look, maybe I would call that look from the twenties through the forties, you know, that type of a look, the, tying the brick and stone together, um...
Was there brick?
But not, if there's brick on the run, some of the renderings. They, but he, he has a back facade of the ones, what he's got.
Oh, got it.
Then the, uh, uh, but staying with what a modern look would be of that thought process, you know, you can't, you have to go, you know, in design, it, it would be, uh, totally old, old world or old school.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and then my last question, so you mentioned that, or Roman mentioned that, is going from a single garage to a two-car garage?
It was, well, we thought two-car was important, that way it doesn't cause product parking issues, everyone has two cars for their home, and, and our indentures, we call for that those garages are used for parking, not for storage, driveways are for guests, um, our outsides are, are maintained by the association, all grass cutting at the same day, um, the landscaping is taken care of by a common company that does everyone's units, shrubs are similar style, things like that, mulching done a couple times a year, and, and so, you know, that's, that's a part of their homeowners association, they are still single-family.
Yeah. Got it. No further questions?
No questions. Commissioner Boyd? I have one, there is a question about the density.
Yes.
We're doing about twenty-one units, at three hundred thousand apiece, at two-car garages, is there any breathing room in this, in this area?
So, we feel, you know, one thing you gotta realize about this one, is we are up against industrial and Manchester Road on this one, and I, we call it buffer, you guys have called it transition, um, I think, I think it lends itself nicely to it. Our larger units are towards the houses, the dented ones on the bottom side are towards Manchester Road, uh, we've kind of thought that through again as we're gonna, uh, we're gonna...
I see no green space, none at all.
And here, this one makes sure you a little better, but here's our green space on this board, uh, if you want to pass this around.
That's with two-car, that's with...
This is with two-car garage, yes.
And I, I don't know if everybody just, you know, hasn't showed driveway, so...
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so... All right, any other questions from commissioners? At this point, we'll entertain a motion. Move to approve?
Previous role.
Of the previous role, any objections? There are no objections, it has been approved by previous role. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Before the developer leads, you mentioned an impressive number of statistics for projects. How many projects have you done in the city?
This will be the first and we're excited for that. Absolutely, absolutely excited for that.
Well, we're still at 2,999.
They are in St. Louis County, McCharles County, and in Camden County and Lakeview Ozarks. Academy of projects there and Lakeview, HCP area.
So what made this block attractive during your first move?
You know, a Realtor had brought it to me. We related to a few of the sellers and I didn't have a obvious idea. And she just kept bringing it to me. I got my partner Derek involved and we got interested in coming towards the city. My wife and I are empty netters now. We want to move in as well. So we're thinking this is a great area, it's a great time, you know.
These are developed in the city that isn't accounted for.
I didn't hear that. Can you say that again?
It's already recorded. We just...
Thank you very much.
Any particular reason why you chose the straight rezoning versus using a PUD?
Just recommendations through multiple meetings and everyone's input have me get a hold of that.
And two more quick things that'll make us a comment is one, I was smiling because Mark Rubin is here tonight. And there was a wave of time in downtown where larger parcels were being converted to the examples of the two that Roman said, through PUDs. And, you know, it was an attractive market and I wish you well.
Thank you.
You will do well. I'll ask you, are you seeking tax abatement?
No, we're not.
Wow. You didn't get any comment? Well, luckily he's already interviewed. We welcome back. And that's it. Who is coming up to give us the next three?
I have a couple for you guys. The next action item on your agenda is for a blinding and redevelopment plan for 4545 and 4559 Woodfleet Avenue. And see it there, it is located just east of Forest Park in Central West End neighborhood. The proposal is to demolish two existing structures in order to construct a 200-unit apartment building at the cost of approximately $43.9 million. This is a rendering of the proposed development. And here is another rendering with a break down of units, including 27 two-bedroom units, 83 one-bedroom units, and 90 studios. Existing structure on the site does have 53 current units across two stories and this proposal would therefore add 147 units. I'll go through some images of the site and the surrounding area. I'll just go in order there and then going clockwise. So this is the site that they are looking to demolish those two structures pictured. As you mentioned, the apartment, as I previously said, has 53 units. And the single-family looking home has actually been converted to office space and that would also be demolished. To the north are a number of single-family attached homes. To the east are condominiums. To the southeast is a parking lot. Directly to the south is another condominium building known as the Westford condominium. And then we have the three-story mixed animal-type housing structures there to the west. And if you continue west, you see some commercial strip one-story buildings. The subject site is designated a specialty mixed-use area and is ratified by state designation. It is defined as areas like downtown St. Louis where it is intended that a mix of uses be preserved and developed. And the plan, the strategic plan also states that it's what makes the city's landscape unique and it's existing, even from a number of areas where businesses, residents, arts, and other entertainment coexist and thrive together. Designation emphasizes that the preservation of unique mix of uses should be preserved and this project aims to increase the density of that within the mixed-use designation, therefore PDA staff finds that the request is in conforming with the strategic code of use plan and recommends this proposal. Happy to answer any questions?
Entertaining. Commissioner Bradlin?
The developers are also present.
Oh, sorry.
The developers are also present.
Well, I'll allow you to get, I like everybody, yes, you can speak on your behalf.
Good evening, Alan. Derek Hamilton with Comma Group. Mark is, I think, has been introduced already to us. Also with Comma Group and we're happy to answer any questions, but obviously the city did a great job setting up the whole reactive questions. The commissioners, man.
Hey, your chances are you brought it now. All right. Commissioner Bradlin?
No questions.
Commissioner Young?
I have a couple. On exhibit A, it says it's probably unoccupied, but on exhibit C, it says occupied.
It is occupied. That was county LCRA agenda, so just pulled from that, but it is occupied, sure.
And can you just speak to how much asbestos, lead, those are two items?
Yeah, and there's floor tile, so viable floor tile, so and also caulking throughout all of the windows. So it's six figures of asbestos for removal.
And it mentions lead, is there lead in the building?
There is some lead, yeah.
And then it talks about this being a transit-oriented development community in that state.
So along with the P and D, obviously there's certainly walking distance from Metro Link Station, as well as plus one.
How far is this terminal station?
I think we are...
Three blocks to the BJZ, I believe, station. And it is something where we're encouraging walkable, training, encourage a walk here in the area.
And with all that, obviously, the medical center, so there'll be quite a few participants who, you know, walk into it.
Metro actually features our UCL project just around the corner and further away from the BJZ station is one of their prototypical units.
I mean, and think this is a great development. Can you speak a little bit more to the bliding of this property? I mean, can you give you definitions or...
So two things. What you see is from the LCRA. And this is a unique meeting and Dale Rusax from the LCRA, SLDC is here. Are there any things that in addition to what Mark has talked about that you would say on behalf of the bliding deal?
Well, it's not a totally accessible building. It doesn't have elevators. It doesn't have a fire suppressant system, so it doesn't have all the things that newer building would have. Obviously, you could, I guess, install all that into the building, but it's clearly a substandard building, I think, in many respects, given its appearance. So comparable to the product that is available now, it seems very...
This is a 21-year-old project that was built in the 20s. So as Dale mentioned, from an accessibility standpoint, absolutely functional, absolutely no structural, so it really is a archaic, you know, form of residential housing in many respects.
And Dale, it's, what we're seeing is chapter 99, bliding and redevelopment study. And the criteria you talked about has it so that fulfills the definition of bliding under chapter 99. What's clear?
Commissioner Beasley?
No questions.
Commissioner Boyd?
I do, but can you come back?
Commissioner Mantis?
Yeah. So what are the rents going to be for this new development? Have you got an idea yet?
We do, yeah. Chunk price will probably be, we're actually, that's my argument, it will be as small as about 450 square feet. So those will be in the $1,200 range. So we're really going to try to keep rents or in some respects, certainly be somewhat consistent with the current product that's there, so we can house some of those existing demographics. And then we will go, our two bedrooms will be in the 2,500, 2,800 range, but we have not very many of those five percentage either. So it's going to be a lot of one bedroom.
Those prices are unfortunately necessitated by a significant construction goal. I think this is...
It's really parking.
Parking is what's driving this thing also.
Gas and place parking, so those come in some robust premiums for building spaces.
It'll be about one per drawing. The premium to next that is the one drawing.
So my concern is that, I don't know if I'd say that it's comparable to what's there now. It certainly will be a better product, but I was just looking it up yesterday and you can get a two-bedroom in this apartment complex for under a thousand, under a thousand dollars.
It is difficult to inhabit building absolutely and also invited some...
Utilities are probably higher, so those people's electric bills are probably higher, so.
Sure.
So form-based code requires a construction of this magnitude now. So what you have now is non-conformal use related to this. We are now building two, what the neighborhood has told, and wanting to be that.
So here's my concern. I think this is a great development. I love seeing added density, especially to the Central West End. My concern, though, is that we're asking for 10-year tax abatement and because of that, it's necessary that this commission blights the property. And essentially, we are taking away affordable, affordable housing options in a city that's the city's hottest neighborhood and in the neighborhood that's continually gentrified.
We still have to work with the city on identifying affordable housing plans for, and I know that you guys are undergoing your processes right now as well, so we're happy to be a part of that conversation, yeah.
Is there plans to have affordable housing?
No, it's, it's our understanding that the city is working on a comprehensive plan in order to provide, you know, thought-through programs in designated areas and to think about this much more comprehensively than in an isolated basis.
Yeah. So that's indeed true. And the...
Commissioner Mantis? We're not voting on the tax abatement.
No, we're not.
Okay. We're voting on the bliding.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I just want to be sure we're thorough and the redevelopment. One of the things that the developer mentioned is that this is in the form-based code area. It is. It's in an area with the form-based code. And the form-based code as being something that was neighborhood-driven and adopted by us encouraged, established, or set some parameters for the design of new buildings and the density of new buildings. I assume you've run the hoops and this fits multiple...
Yeah, there's been multiple neighborhood meetings as well as meetings in front parks. And here we have, we have both neighborhood and also alderman support. And we went in, we went into this with the community engagement process, very collaborative in nature. We hosted several meetings. We got their feedback. We reacted to their feedback. So I think we have a pretty satisfied contingent of people that are surrounding the development, the proposed development.
And back to the affordable housing side. PDA staff wrote a treatise primer on gentrification, displacement issues and whatnot a couple years ago. That's now been helpful in formulating a discussion. So there's now an effort through the community development agency of evaluating affordable housing stocks, evaluating setups, and how to make that mixture come out of the city policy.
If I can also touch on the density that we have here, which is of course speaking through the form-based code, in order to get that kind of density on the site in this location, so replacing parking underneath that, putting parking underneath the structure is much more comfortably than pre-cash. We got parking, so we need a way to offset, you know, digesting some of that, some of that cost. As we all know, in St. Louis, we can't charge rates that are commensurate with cost. And then when you amortize that over many, many years, it's incredibly hard to pay for that parking.
Understood. And I guess my final, my comments to my other commissioners would be that we are not bliding a parking lot, we are not bliding a vacant lot, we are not bliding a abandoned building. We are bliding a building that is currently, two buildings that are currently on the tax rolls, currently paying taxes in the city. And we're essentially subsidizing, using tax money, well, using tax incentives to build a new building to replace the currently functioning buildings, which I think is just very poor policy in general. So while it's a great development and I think it would be awesome if it happened and the developers were able to use all private money for this to get this to work, I'm going to have to be a no vote on this.
Commissioner Conway, any questions? We're close. You ready for the rest?
So the, you know, the images that you provided, it's very hard to interpret. It looks stylistically a little bit less than Brooklyn, it's on Forest Park Parkway as far as truly can't it. I assume that you'll have a higher risk finish on this, getting on the competition.
Sixty-five percent, and I don't know if it's a rendering, so that's brick. Yeah. Oh, this will be a far departure from that. So this will be brick and cast-in-place concrete. We've got an amenity deck on that southwest side, so green. We've actually got a parrot setback with a 40-foot setback. So we plan on a very enhanced landscaping package on that front facing south.
I'd agree with Commissioner Blanton that, I mean, one of the reasons that the Central West End was designated a great neighborhood was because we have a diversity of housing and that is definitely what we're seeing is that all of the affordable housing is being replaced by high-end housing. I mean, no one can call a $12 a month micro apartment the equivalent of a two-bedroom for living in a low-income apartment. And I say, I need a little education. So why is it that we don't require that there be some units and buildings that are affordable? It's kind of how subsidized they are more. That's a question. I'm just giving Commissioner Boyd this.
My short answer is I can't speak to a party that consists of 28 members.
All right, there we go. I've got a couple more. Good. You want to dive in, then I'll come back to you if any questions are there.
Commissioner Young, if I can, Commissioner Boyd.
I'm just kind of going back through the notes on this. So if this building is occupied, what is the plan for the current residents that are there?
So the resident owner, they will be, I mean, they will be, you know, relocated after they turn. A fair amount of the people that live there are employees or residents at Medical Center, clinicians, residents. Some will move out of state courts. So they're renewal, in my communication with the current owner, you know, there's a lot of turnover year after year, so.
But it provides a walkable residence for people working at medical center, which will know what their compensation is.
So for, I think it's at 53, a couple fewer than that. We also, though, I, we're not going to be far separated. And these are, these are not huge units either that are presently in place. So it's not going to be a vast and a ton of dichotomy, you know, from pricing structures standpoint by percentage either. I'm not dismissing, you know, it's a very valid point, but, you know, we are going to have quite a few small, you know, old micros, studios, one-bedrooms. We're sensitive to, you know, what market is out there, so.
Well, and I think some of this is for the benefit of the LRA, because I know this group has been struggling with some of these bliding studies. Some of this, I think, is for discussion purposes, but, you know, asbestos, I'm the engineer, please, this board to have some of this knowledge and bring it to the table. You know, if we're talking about asbestos tiles and cauks, those are typically things that aren't removed from a building unless it's demolished. So I don't know that that is an issue with, you know, the current building as it stands. Six figures for that kind of removal is pretty substantial. Transportation-oriented development also, you know, this property looks like it's about a half mile. That's really stretching the distance on TOD. Typically, they say about a quarter mile is what people will walk to a major transit destination. It's on the outer limits of what we're talking about here, really. And, you know, a number of these boxes unapplicable are related to TOD, so I just thought I'd point that out.
Commissioner Boyd?
Go ahead, first.
Well, I wanted to pull up, this is more a market question. So I live in the Central West End. I'm training all of these builders, because I'm still going to be, there's not a density question.
be a, a market question, but are we actually growing our apartment, building population, or are we simply cannibalizing other apartments that we have, and if we, people then move into the side of a building and then have a, a problem in apartments?
So, the answer is, we are definitely pulling from the county, we're pulling from Monta T. So, and, so we can, so, so we, what we've seen is the byproduct, um, of that at Chrome, um, which is our project over, you know, Chrome, it's over in the Grove, it's on the curb in the center of the show, though. Um, you're seeing a very, a, a much higher percentage than anticipated over there, people coming both from the county as well as relocating to St. Louis, so.
But we aren't really growing our regional population, so it really is just a
You are a very, very sympathetic audience on that conversation. We would love to see the St. Louis region grow, it's high, much larger, we are, that will always become a lot more valuable, so to speak.
I am curious, I just do worry about having a huge lot of high-end apartments.
We have the guarantee, uh, makes us, makes our president very nervous as well.
Right, the market analysis that we're doing, you know, is to find data as well as, you know, doing some projections, uh, and we dig into that data pretty hard. Uh, and then, you know, we are seeing some of the western ends, there's, there's a market gap for this type of, this type of project.
And are they designing in a way that they could convert to, is there a time point in the financing process that people
This is gonna be, from the, from the scale of state point, that's just gonna be too big.
You're also making financial
Yeah, yeah.
How about, you
Thanks for your attention.
Commissioner Boyce, go ahead.
Sure, um, this is certainly an exciting project. Um, anytime somebody from the north side sees something like this, you kinda get both happy and sad, um, because these phenomenal type of developments can't seem to find their way, you know, north of Del Mar. And I'm a very, you know, dense, I, I love this, I grew up in, you know, Hamish nights where I was good for neighborhood, put single-family and two-fou, two-family, four-family flats. Uh, this is like super density 'cause we keep going up. And, and in the central west end, what the trend is, is to keep going up instead of going out across the city. So, we don't really get neighborhoods that can really benefit from this type of development with some good incentives, you know, to keep rents affordable. Um, so, on that aspect, that saddens me, but of course, I'm excited for the city because of these, you know, few of these type of developments. Um, I would hope that we do start putting more thought into how many affordable units we take offline and replace with high-end units. And I'm wondering if there's any way possible that there could be a set of fat amount of affordable units in this space. Uh, two-hundred is a lot, that's a lot of units. And of course, economy of scale, and you need that for a forty-some, forty-three-point, whatever, million-dollar project. Um, the tax rate in their request is ten years, seventy percent. What would it look like?
And I wanna, I wanna be careful now, because that is a project, on the, on the tax rate request, it's actually a misnomer. What we are asking for is a ten-year tax insurance amount that equates to a thousand dollars per unit. It's going, it's, it's in the ordinance, it's been currently for your Board of Aldermen, uh, that says basically that there will be a thousand dollars per unit added to the tax rolls. Currently, this property yields about fifty-four thousand dollars total in taxes to, to the rolls of the city in St. Louis. So, we're actually gonna quadruple the first-year taxes, and it grows by two-and-a-half percent for those ten years, and then after ten years, it goes way back to the normal rule. This seventy percent is an estimation by, by the SLC in the calculation.
Right, but where I'm going with that is, what if it was eighty percent? Could you squeeze any affordable units in that space if the tax rate was eighty percent, or eighty-five, or ninety, or a hundred percent over ten years? That's the question. Is it possible to squeeze, uh, because here's what's gonna happen on the floor.
I think there's probably a larger conversation with Aldermen about, in general, about what can we, I will have something that we can speak
Not right now, no. I'm asking to think about it, that's all I'm asking, because this, this is gonna probably come before HUD. And even when it pass out of HUD, that doesn't mean it's over, there'll be a lot of, trust me, there'll be a lot of debate on the floor if there's no affordable units in this space.
I'd love the other conversation.
Yeah, I mean.
And not just with me, you know, I look for that HUD, but I'm teeing this up for you when you come to HUD to maybe, you know, have thought about that and how it could possibly
You're a board member of
Yeah, I, I sit on the low-income housing, uh, senior, uh, board, and so this is something that I'm very, I'm very passionate about.
I was recently appointed the MHTC, and I, these are
And these are definitely topics that I spend a fair amount of time, or I should say, we spend a fair amount of time on, trying to figure out a much better mousetrap than presently exists. Um, we've got high cost of construction, as you know, um, and that, so you just end up with, you know, pretty simple math on revenue over cost, um, which then triggers, of course, uh, and we're already working for a low-market return on this, so to answer your question, I mean, is, are, are there methods? Um, yes, there are, and then, you know, we do need a very strategic plan on how we, how we land in some sort of result.
And respectively, I wanna say, I hear that over and over and over and over again. Um, so, I, again, want to encourage you to think about how many units can you squeeze? I don't know, ten, fifteen, I don't know if that would be, if you had a little more, I'm not saying, you know, you know, seventy and ten and seventy percent, you know, is not something that should be supported, but if it really, if it's a real struggle financially to put units based on what you've presented so far, what would it take to build some units for the rest of the space? That's all I'm asking.
Sure.
And so, we can have that conversation that's in the HUD committee, you know, uh, more in depth, because you would've gone back and ran them, because you're not gonna do it tonight, I get that.
Yeah.
So, I'm just trying to raise your conscious level, so that, um, it doesn't have to be antagonistic when it hits the committee.
And I hope this committee, as well as your HUD committee and the full board sees, we're not asking for a hundred percent, we, we, we know that that conversation is key, especially central west end.
Right, and, and I
We're gonna be sensitive to that, we're not asking for every last dollar, we're asking for the dollars trying to make this thing work.
Right, that's understood, but we also sat through one of these would save a lot when they, it was the horriblest design I've ever seen in my life, a tin-can new store. Um, but it was like, well, if we gave you more tax rate, maybe could you make it better? You know, could you put the brick, can you do this, can you do that?
Okay.
Uh, Union Page.
Union Page.
Yeah, um, people don't think that way. We think that way in our community, you know, so it's our job to elevate the consciousness of developers like yourself to start thinking like that. Um, because it, it, it's a softer sell, oh, I'm not asking for ten years at ten, you know, a hundred percent, I'm only asking for ten at seventy or ten at fifty. So, it's a softer sell, but, oh, well, they're not getting a hundred percent, but we're not getting what we need either.
That's true.
I'm sorry.
No, it's
I didn't mean to be
It's all of the boy, and I, I, I will, as we've had this discussion, remind ourselves that Dale has been present during this, and that's a, a good
And I thank you, though.
Good thing for, for the understanding of, the door that first gets knocked on is Elsie Ray's door.
And as a last, I will say, I am always concerned from a much more simpler place. The waiters, the cooks, the ditch watchers, the servers in the central west, it can't live here. Four hundred square feet at twelve hundred dollars, I can't walk to work. And we keep running out of service community in the city where now they have to be transient to come work, and they can't even live, you know, we get to that same adage, you can't live where you work. And that's happening across the board, I think Commissioner Benton and Commissioner Ward are both talking about that. We gotta get away from that. You've gotta be able to be able to go, that was part of my theory, you could walk to work and serve and be part of the community, but now you are a servant and not living in the community. And that's my concern for this point, so I just wanna bring that up to the, up to the board. So, at that point, I will entertain any, any motion from the board unless it be placed.
Move for
The move? No, you're second.
Second.
The move is seconded, please call a roll.
All of them aboard.
Aye.
Commissioner Benton?
Nay.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Conroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Chair Strader?
I say.
And most of them passes with
Four ayes.
Three nays, and then the potential.
Welcome back, Mr. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Didn't do
Oh, yeah, my one.
I don't want to get
Oh, that's, oh, yeah.
We don't want to
He's a brother, he's a brother.
Couple's nine, seven in the market.
Yeah, you're on the spot. So, you can call me, so, so, so why don't we do it?
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
So, give me your card.
Actually, I don't
I'll just call him.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, we have a
Another one? Roman's back.
Yes. Wow. Another chapter, I'm glad you studied redevelopment plan, um, a scattered site redevelopment plan, uh, the Heavens Avenue, Newstead Avenue, Pendleton Avenue, scattered sites redevelopment area. The site is, uh, a little over an acre, it consists of thirteen parcels, uh, you can see them located, uh, along forty-three-hundred block of, uh, Heavens between North Newstead and Pendleton in the, uh, Antrim neighborhood. Uh, it's sort of sandwiched between two major streets, Dr. Martin and Rock on the north, Big Boulevard in the south. Uh, the existing uses are twelve vacant lots and one, uh, vacant single-family building. Uh, the proposal is to construct a Samuel Moore senior estate development, uh, which calls for the construction of six for-sale, uh, single-family homes. Uh, the respective development, Lincoln Community Development Corporation, uh, which has, what I understand, built about seventy single-family homes, uh, in the immediate area over the last thirty years, um, uh, all of which are located near the, uh, where I can, uh, Technical College complex is located, uh, just to the, just to the south there. Mr. David Tadel of, uh, Frank Community Development Corporation. Uh, this is a aerial photo, uh, the sites are shown in red there. As you can see, uh, much of the block is currently vacant, particularly the eastern end of the block. These are some photos of the, uh, vacant lots located on the northern, uh, side of forty-three-hundred block, some additional vacant lots, uh, and, uh, and these are located on the south side of the block, this is Ramon, single-family building that's located in the redevelopment area, it's currently being demolished. Nobody can see it, there's a guy up there on the third floor that's, uh, starting the demolition up there.
I'm not supposed to break the news, man.
Uh, in terms of adjacent uses, uh, these parcels are not in the redevelopment area, but they are in the block, you can see a, a single-family building that's crumbling, uh, a vacant six-family building. Uh, at the eastern end is a whole collection of vacant lots. On the other hand, you have, uh, five conceptual residential buildings in the south side. This is a, uh, foundation, uh, that's currently being done, it's a particular development project, uh, and you can see the name there, Samuel Moore Senior Estate. And, uh, not a surprise that the Aldermen supports this thing. This is a recently constructed single-family building. David, is this one of your buildings?
Yes.
Uh, this is on the south side of the block, recently constructed.
Aye.
Um, and, uh, off the block, uh, just to the southwest is, uh, Rankin's, uh, Technology Center, and, uh, just to the west are seven single-family buildings, which I believe also were constructed by, by the development. Uh, these are some front elevations, uh, that will be used for the, uh, six single-family homes. The homes will have, I understand, three bedrooms, two half-baths, and will have an asking price of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that will be available below to moderate income families. The Strategic Landes Plan divaguages the area as a neighborhood development area, which calls for large-scale, uh, residential development in areas with a large concentration of vacant blocks and vacant buildings. So, it isn't conforming with the Strategic Landes Plan, uh, there's no, uh, deed, amendment, or naming, uh, but the Community Development Corporation owns all the parcels. Fifteen years of tax abatement is being proposed at the terms listed on the slide, and, uh, staff has recommended approval. Uh, Mr. Tadel of the Frank Community Development Corporation, here for any
Aye. Uh, David?
I think first, uh,
Well, I appreciate the presentation, I kinda, I don't have any questions, you have to answer anything more.
Okay. Is there someone else that you said?
No, just, just
All right, with that, we'll entertain questions, Mr. Bradley.
I just think it's a nice project for the area, puts some nice new homes, some vacant lots, I like it.
Commissioner Young?
I just have a couple of statements. Um, I think what Rankin is doing in this area is fantastic, I think this is a perfect example of the type of project that should be used for blighting. Um, for those of you that didn't notice, in section two, they talk about the, um, hands-on experience, they use these projects for their students to get experience with these projects. Um, I, you guys have single-handedly been revitalizing this area, so thank you for that. Um, I volunteer at the school and, um, live not too far from there, so really appreciate that you guys take care of it.
Mr. Peoples?
I think it's a very good project, I don't have any questions, but
Commissioner Boyce?
I just wanna, um, commend Rankin for all the good work. I've been watching those houses go up for, ever since I've been on them for sixteen years, and you guys are really doing good work over there, and I do also appreciate the fact your students are, are buying something, and that's what brings the cost down. Um, so, definitely commend you, I'm jealous, um, you guys should be in the twenty-second ward also, uh, not just the fourth, don't limit yourself. There's a lot of good work to be done. Um, I didn't catch, how many units are being built?
Six, was there a six out there? Um, was explained to Roman earlier, like, it's kinda strategic how I try to buy them as they come available. Uh, some previous photos, they showed there was a house that's falling down, and there's a cross by those two lots, it's right around the corner, so we developed the forty-four block of Alvin's, we're kind of kinda working towards the forty-three hundred block, it looked really, really good, and we're on forty-four, it's not forty-three. Um, that's a really great neighbors, um, obviously, it's somewhere strategic how we've done it, because that's what was up for LRA or a church sale and the neighbors, um, so people just approached us. So, currently, I've got an offer with the LRA, and six is kinda hard to fit. The ultimate goal that I've got for the program and the development is to try to get blocks. If we can get a block that I can turn it loose to our architectural students, give them the opportunity to have a little more creative design, a little more fun with this program. So, the whole concept is the carpenters build it, the architects design it, I love these electricians, and right now, we got a lovely business center, we teach those guys plumber things, they had, they fell a hint, they all estimated to in the first year. Um, so, if I can get ahead, and that's the ultimate goal, is to try to get as many as we can stack ahead, so we can give the architecture department, the kids can do the design, we can improve the design, our carpenters, they can fit it, and they can fit it for basically ground house, and that's, that's the whole goal. This development, we actually had a few more properties that we were looking at using, so ultimately, we had to sell some over to, um, some other developments, new retirement homes that had a connection to the area. Um, but that means that we've got other ones that were attached, so we're right now with the odds, one we just built, two are building out. Uh, the next two parcels that I buy that's gonna throw in four and five, if I get the other ones in the LRA, we should draw them off, and if they're adding, that'd be our six. So, it gives me three years, and that three years timeframe, that's just one year, I'd like to think I can stack on a little bit more, so we can continue to keep the houses side-by-side. Um, you can have two-story structure, that one's kinda narrowed down a little bit from smaller, smaller parcels, uh, so we try to, just all these lots, be certainly around thirty feet, the house to be looking for wires, that one on the pole, a forty-three, thirty-eight O, that had a side porch on it, that's sold before we finished it. Um, so, there's a lot of interest in the area, something I was telling Roman about before was we just, I, I'm relatively new, so I've been overseeing it for about a year, almost a year and a half, two degrees. Last out, we, we put almost two-hundred thousand into it. Again, this is our training, this is for students, and we give them the opportunity to screw things up a little bit, with, with, I mean, their energy efficient home, not too much, we have a schedule, we have a, we have a progress.
How many square, uh, what's the average square foot per home?
Around fifty, I don't know if I can give you a take, a little bit, I think this one's around fifteen, fifteen, sixteen hundreds, two-part garage in the back end, and side porch, that's full basement. Underneath that concrete, uh, front walkway that's actually our vault, that we added in to do, we use, uh, superior wall, um, which I purchased somewhere in Illinois, but the rental is one of the things with, uh, energy efficient home, so we try to go with just new ideas, it's creative, you know, for, for everyone, we have a real good agent that's great, with, often to people in the area, I know what they like, for The two-story structures have gone down, that most people want, have to master on California, you know, we're not two-story. We, uh, we got the whole middle foot in this year, we kind of had to go up because we had limitations on the size of the lot. We had to fix the street, and you know, not some, one house survived last year, this year we had to have two, so...
What kind of subsidies are you getting for these homes? About tax abatement? That's it? Wow, I have a lot of blocks with no homes on them. So if you look at your strategic plan, they're those, your fifty, eight-hundred block, I got quite a few. So anyway, again, good job you guys are doing over there, appreciate that.
I think it's a great program. One of my best learning experiences was the graduate program I had in school when I art class designed and built a house. So I think these types of programs are, are great, and...
Commissioner Noah?
Um, these are the first two, I didn't, you did, plenty of people.
Well, they, they have a hand in on it. It's really our, our first day, you know, first year, or second year, daytime, first time student. Play program is a part of what we do. We also have, like, youth film, and there's something to do with that, but they kind of like, right around the garage, you know, they have a hand in on building the garage, and primarily like, the full-time student.
Commissioner, what's?
Um, no question.
I will go on record committing stand in Goodfellow because they are doing what we want developers to do. You're doing it where it needs to be done, you are in Delmar. You're doing it with those who need to be done, experienced young folks that will learn and trade, that can now, you know, grow a family, have a living, make it early, and stay in the city. So I commit, please let that be known. We are very appreciative of that. With that, I would entertain a motion for... You see yours is a whole lot of nice, everything emotion.
I recommend to pass.
That has been moved a second in, vote please.
Alden, Boyd?
Hi.
Sorry, I wronged one, wronged one. Sorry.
Hi.
subject.
Um, all right, Alden, uh, Commissioner Benton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Chris Robert?
Aye.
Six months after a graduate, a senior class graduates, what's the employment rate?
So, uh, so last year, we got over five hundred companies that are job fair. We got a job fair coming up in two weeks. I think every student had a job. I don't know if it's before they graduate, we don't want to say a hundred percent, but I mean, we have a kind of ninety-seven percent. I hire students at the same time, work with them, I'm handling that for the school. Those students have, I'd say, we tend job offers. I couldn't, I couldn't bring on student workers, because they all had jobs.
I need twelve of them, I can make, if that's my way, I'll give them a job. We'd be happy to take you on, and, and we have a job fair coming up, better than that.
And if I'm not mistaken, you still have a lot of vacant, these course students, am I not sure?
We're always looking to take on...
That's what I thought, there's always opportunities for students over there, so... Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Roman, knock it on again.
The last redevelopment plan, this is for the Goodfellow Boulevard, I think, Goodfellow Boulevard, West Florissant Avenue, scattered sites redevelopment area. The site is a little shy of ten acres in size, includes seventeen parcels, redevelopment area, a little bit stretched, very, very lean. The heavy line is the, is the city limits, if you're wondering. So all of these parcels are located along the West Florissant, as well as Goodfellow Boulevard, and the Walnut Park West, and North Point Village neighborhoods. The existing uses vary considerably, commercial, industrial, institutional, residential, virtually everything, and as well as the building conditions, which range from good condition to poor condition. The purpose of the redevelopment plan is to encourage investment and future projects by providing up to fifteen years of tax abatement as a development incentive. There is always specific redevelopment projects or a prospective developer. As part of this redevelopment plan, which I believe was initiated by the Alderwoman, Pam Lewis, who takes up work. This aerial photo, again, you can see that the straddles the city limits, and some of these parcels are actually partly in the city, partly in the county. Many of the parcels are quite large, and to the east are primarily single-family, I think many of which are in the city. So I'll quickly run down the sort of major uses, starting with West Florissant, the corner of West Florissant, and Goodfellow is a bar and restaurant. We next have a vacant commercial building. Been vacant quite some time, photo on the left shows the front along West Florissant. The photo on the right shows its rear. Many of you may recognize the building as the former Club Imperial. Jan, if you might get the story on, because I understand it, uh, it was purchased about a year or two ago by a, um, a developer who wanted to demolish it and replace it with a strip shopping center. The preservation board had turned down his demolition request, at which point he donated the building back to LRA, which currently owns it. So I think part of this redevelopment plan is to try to encourage renovation of this building. As part of that effort, a year or so ago, when, when the demolition was being considered, this rendering was put together by Connie Tomassula of PDA Urban Design Department. You can see some of the improvements to the building, as well as the added street trees there along, along West Florissant. Across the street from the Club Imperial are two vacant commercial buildings, one on the right, Popeye's Chicken, that seems to have closed. Going down Goodfellow Boulevard, and heading north is a laundromat, a religious banquet center that's in very good condition. North Point Apartments, a large apartment complex. The redevelopment area is bisected by a major railroad railway. Just to the north of there is Louisa Food Products Incorporated. What's interesting about this is their warehouse building there on the, on the left, their office building is on the right. Both of those buildings are located in St. Louis County. The parking lots in the foreground are located in North Point, so I assume that we're not getting as much impact revenue as the county. And then, ending the redevelopment area is five consecutive, uh, two-family buildings that are relatively good shape. In terms of adjacent properties, along West Florissant, you see a chop suey restaurant and a chicken fast food place. On the, just beyond the city limits, I believe it's the city of Jennings, are, are two dollar stores, Dollar General and... There clearly is some market availability in that area. And I mentioned before, on the eastern side of Goodfellow, are a string of, of single-family buildings, many of which are in very good condition, as are the buildings along the side street. The photo on the right is North Point Boulevard. And there is some industrial buildings in the area, this is near the railroad right behind, the photo on the left is in the city, a vacant industrial building. On the right is a, you know, a large industrial complex located in Jennings. The city's strategic land use plan designates the site with a number of different designations, which generally match the existing uses. So it is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, there is no use of eminent domain. Fifteen years of tax abatement is being offered to try to encourage redevelopment of the area, and staff has recommended approval.
You said there is no developer, is there, Dale, do you want to speak to this or not?
Well, I'd be happy to. No, it's, it's really, the Alderwoman is obviously very concerned about the Club Imperial building, and at first, I think that was her focus, but then as she began looking, she thought it'd be a good idea to just extend it out to encourage development rehabilitation of other properties adjacent to it. So I think that's the emphasis. There is no developer at this point, we certainly hope it would encourage not only the redevelopment of the Club Imperial building, but perhaps renovation of some of the other buildings adjacent to it.
So Dale, in, in that scenario, it's LCRA that's authored, authored the plan, and it's ten, ten plus acres. There's no developer. It will ask through us, go to the Board of Alderman. Tell us a little bit more about how you seek developers for this area.
Well, we will put out an RFP, and hopefully we'll find a developer, or a series of developers who would be willing to, to work on the property. As, as was mentioned, the Club Imperial building is now back in LRA, so we have a double reason why we would try and seek developers. Number one, we'd like to see the renovation of the property, and it's historic in many respects, but we'd also love to find someone to acquire a property that the LRA owns, that's always a high objective.
There was a statement, Roman, you made, and I just want to clarify, it was originally sold about a year or so ago, and then surrendered back to LRA?
It was surrendered back to LRA after the demolition request was turned down by the preservation board.
So what was this purchase price of the property?
Don't know, Jan, are you aware of that?
I don't know.
And there was no purchase price back from LRA?
I'm not sure how that transaction was...
My, my understanding is the developer was not a guy who did a lot of work, he, you know, was just a worker.
Okay. Commissioner Bradley?
No question.
Commissioner Young?
No question, I'd like to see some of this proactive use of blighting, so it's, it's well thought out, it seems like.
Commissioner People?
No question.
Commissioner Boyd?
I feel like I missed out on a childhood. You know, if Club Imperial is legendary, and I had no idea it was there at West Florissant and Goodfellow. I always thought it was on Grant somewhere, I tell you, I've been in, under a rock or something.
We have not moved it.
Wow. Wait a minute, wait, but I did have a question about, um, that whole strip. I totally support, um, what's happening, but in between there, there's North Side something, the church owns a banquet facility?
Yeah, on the building.
Right, so it, it certainly is not blighted, I mean, why would we blight that?
Well, it's, it's a whole area, it's not each individual building in place.
Yeah, but couldn't we have skipped over it? I mean, why are we blighting a building that is probably worth two hundred, something three hundred thousand dollars?
Well, I think the idea was just to do a continuous strip. Yeah. We could have skipped over it, but...
But that's what you guys should have done, is skipped over it, because you're legally saying this whole strip is blighted and it's not.
They're legally saying that this area is, has a predominance of blight, it's in a consolidated area with a redevelopment plan to encourage developers.
No, I get that, but it seemed like maybe we should have skipped over that piece, and... Also, if you're gonna, it's gonna, let's say you're gonna blight the whole block of Monmouth King, which hopefully is coming up, but let's say there's a piece in the fifty-three hundred, fifty-five hundred block that doesn't need to be blighted, so why would we just keep going?
Remember, one of the things that would come with the redevelopment plan is some design standards for somebody on that property, in that geography, even if it wasn't blighted, but they were coming in for permits, that you'd have some control.
Oh, okay. So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that. Um, that is a little, just trivial, Dale, you guys obviously have a cookie cutter template on your exhibit, be mindful of, you know, the Alderwoman, Alderman stuff.
Yes, I understand, right.
Sometimes that happens in board deals. Okay, but I'm excited for the Alderman of twenty-seven, because that is what we need to be doing.
Yeah, just a technical question, so, um, let's hope this works, but say, say we don't get, say there isn't any developers that approach after the RFP is issued, does this strip stay blighted in perpetuity, or is there a sunset for our action here tonight?
So the, the action that would consummate this is the Board of Alderman's action for this geography. Then is adopted LCRA, Chapter ninety-nine plan, of which there are many, many around the city, and some more contemporary than others. So this is my lead in to Dale, tell me, tell us how they, how they're maintained and how they expire.
Well, they don't tend to expire, because, you know, hopefully development's going to eventually curb it, if not this year, next year, or maybe five years from now. But there is a schedule, and I don't remember what this one has in the way of schedule. It probably has maybe a ten-year window, I would guess, that's typical of, of what we do. The assumption is that if we don't make it in ten years, we'll go back to the Board of Alderman, perhaps, if, if, if extension, if it needs, uh, if he warrants it.
And how do you crank it up if the, Ricky obviously with, with the Alderwoman and getting excitement to this? If the initial RFP doesn't bear fruit, how do you crank it up to try to get more interest, or reach out a little further?
Well, I don't know exactly how we do that, we might reissue it at some point.
With fireworks?
There you go, right, right.
No further questions. Commissioner Conway?
No question.
Commissioner Boyd?
No question.
Next with that, I'll entertain a motion, upper deck.
Second?
Previous role?
Called for previous role, any objections? There are no objections, it passes the previous role. On the nineteen... Uh, you pick that, what, yeah. Donnie, you take in the next?
Good evening, members of the commission, and your audience that's still here, is waiting for these items. Apologize to the members of the commission that are here or not here, and recognition that today is a visitor's holiday, but some people were unable to attend, including Dan Krasnoff and Culture Resources Office. So I will, I will pitch in on this.
And one of our own commissioners?
And one of our own commissioners, yes, indeed. This is, I want to remind everybody, the next two items are dealing with something that we do where our sister agency, the Culture Resources Office, has in one of its activities that it takes on regarding demolition. Those demolitions are a tentative decision for thirty days, and in a unique way, that item that's occurred with a ruling on a demolition at the preservation board, it's gone to, it's gone to the preservation board, is allowed to be reviewed by the planning commission. That review is a two-step process, to remind everybody, where the applicant appeals to us and says, we'd like to have a shot and go to the planning commission. The planning commission then, and that's what we're doing tonight, we're not doing the heavy lifting of actually taking up and doing the review, we're deciding whether we want to take on it. And as you know, the experience members is, we don't go into a lot of detail into what we're doing, we're going to show you, you've seen in your packet, the materials presented at the preservation board, I'll show you a few more, and then we decide to take it up, or not take it up. If we do take it up, then at a future meeting, we will get the records from the preservation board, and you will be, uh, asked to review that, understand, and there'll be brief presentations, because there's not new information that's presented, but brief limitations from the city, from Culture Resources, and from the applicant team to help walk you through some of the things like the permanent parks in these cases. At that time, if we decide, we can make free decisions, we can reverse the decision of the preservation board, or we can affirm the decision of the preservation board, or we can modify it, we have some flexibility in, in that. If that is something that our actions, such as affirming a denial, is not in the interest of what the developers would like to do, they can then go in court. If we choose not to take it up tonight, they can then go in court. So really, what we do when we agree to take it up, is we get another bite of the apple to scrutinize and see how well our work has been done to date, and we look at the surface test. So that's the general background. I want to tell you, just so you know, we currently have from two previous reports before us as a, as a review from the preservation board, two active court cases on properties that have been denied in circuit court, so there's their amount, and I'll give you that as a background. With that, we're going to go through two, and as you know, I'm going to be really brief on this. The forty-one is at thirty-two forty-three Indiana. It's really a two-story residential building. The building is in the Benton Park Local and National Register District, is in the store district in the city, as well as the preservation review, review district. The building is privately owned, and the matter... The building is privately owned, and the matter was at the July twenty-ninth Preservation Board, uh, so they have now solicited your determination as to whether you want to take it up for review, uh, this is really the visuals that were presented at the Preservation Board, about thirty-two forty-three Indiana, uh, it is, as you can see, a building on a rather large parcel, uh, that is in the historic district, across the majority of place, the Preservation Board would have seen these pictures to give you an idea of what's going on, and the, and the building on, on the south facade is identified as the wall, wall being more visual in the picture showing as, as being in, uh, deteriorated condition. Uh, we're just going around the building here, uh, chasing the areas, uh, this is a map, just to remind us, this is an area that is designated, it has the historic district, uh, the Benton Park National Register District, and that this particular building is a contributing building in that historic district. Uh, you can see, uh, it circles here, it's on a wider block than, um, some of the buildings are on this, this street, uh, but you can also see at one time, there were some very close and very narrow buildings to each other, um, and I'll just ask Jan Cameron, who's from the Preservation Board, if there's anything else to add, uh, about the building and, uh, in general, the Preservation Board's take up on this.
Hey, Logan, this building actually is a little bit older than most of the buildings in the National Register District, it was constructed in nineteen oh five, um, it's also a more contemporary, or nineteen oh five, design, so it doesn't have the elaborate framework that you might be used to seeing in the Benton Park National Register District. Other than the collapse of the interior origins, the building is considered sound, and it is in fact listed as a contributing resource by the National Park Service and by the various state certifications.
So, the, the request from the applicant was, uh, to demolish it, uh, there have been other properties, other structures on this site that have been demolished, uh, and through the Preservation Review process, it was denied, uh, and it's strictly, uh, the Planning Commission's discretion, has to take it up, uh, or say no, and send it to court, we take it up, uh, you'll see it at the next meeting, uh, and review everything, understand, uh, the detail of it, uh, and then, sort of act in the Preservation Board's stead about whether you want to uphold the demolition request, modify it in some way, or reverse it.
So, at this point for the commission, it is a question of, are we, the motion is, do we want to take it up, or the motion is not take it up?
Simple as that.
A simple as that, yes. I will entertain a motion.
I like to just next up on it. So, you know, reviewing the documents, we cannot consider anything besides what has already been presented to Preservation Board, looking through them, you know, reading through them, I don't see any engineering reports on structural integrity of the building, I don't see anything that I would say I would do any different from what they previously done before, so I, I would say it would be nothing more than a waste of my time to take it up, in my opinion.
I'll, I'll modify that, just, just to be, remember, what you have seen here is the PowerPoint presentation, and in your document, it is a multi-page document discussing what went on at the Preservation Board, but in no way is the complete record of what happened, which includes the transcript, uh, visuals that the, that the developer may have brought, that would be, that, we're essentially asking, uh, do you want us, and we've done it many times, to prepare those materials in depth of everything that happened at the Preservation Board?
This has put no version of what happened. Commissioner Young? Any comments or, uh, Commissioner Peoples?
No comments at all.
Commissioner Boyd?
Um, slide right here, the first one, what are we supposed to be looking at? Let's see, um, the, the east facade wall down, it says, uh, I don't see anything.
You don't see what?
The reference to the wall being down.
Oh, it mentions in the list that it happened at the same time demolition contractors were on site.
Demolition contractors doing other, other work in the process, that's what you're seeing.
Oh, oh, I missed that.
Not the, the east facade, what are we looking at in that photo?
You helped me with the...
That's the side of the building, it has a butt brick front, but the brick is, the building itself is brick.
So is this one building?
No, the building in question is the yellow building.
Oh, the yellow building.
And this one is this building?
Okay.
That's the side of the yellow building.
Gotcha, okay.
So I was saying, there's a question, but since it's been old, why is this historic? Because it was in the age of significance of the National Register District, during the cutoff date, uh, when they were, and it is, um, justifying public contrary, I mean, that's in.
Commissioner Matt? No questions. Commissioner Boyd? I will entertain a motion to either take it up or to not.
I move we do not take it up.
Second.
There's a move that we do not take it up, which means before the vote, that it would go back to the Preservation Board. No, I mean, they have the, the, no, he has...
What, I'll, I'll play, uh, well, I won't play lawyer, I will say that in this realm, we're acting in a quasi judicial manner, of doing administrative things from the city saying, well, this is the last time that the applicant can do administratively, if we don't take it up anymore, so, perfectly.
Able to go to Circuit Court. I'm sorry, I didn't get this. Like, with that understanding, I will entertain a vote that we do not take it up, that's the motion on the floor. Oliver Boyd?
Aye. Commissioner Banton?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Sheriff Strader?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
We're going to face, look at a second one that has a similar disposition, that it is being taken to the Preservation Board, now being brought to us based off of their actions, correct?
So this is fifty-six thirty-three Botanical Avenue, um, and the, sorry, I've got to shuffle a little paper here, um, and, you're right, we're doing two similar items, we're analyzing as well, they're before us, uh, that they were denied at the Preservation Board, uh, I'll just, I'll use from the background you saw in the, in the brief report, it's a one-and-a-half story residential building, uh, the, the building is currently owned by a development corporation, uh, and the building is in a Preservation Review District, as I say that, I just want to remind people that as Jan responded in the last one, is that the district that that was in, was a district that had been evaluated as to historic resources in it, uh, the definitions of the boundaries of the historic resources was defined, went through a process of approval as a historic district, uh, and was accepted nationally as a historic district. We have historic districts in the city that are nationally authorized and created, we have local historic districts, which we create, but don't necessarily have a national component to them, and then as another look at geography, but not a look to create, call us to evaluate the historic resources in the geography, these areas of the city are designated as a Preservation Review District, uh, and that's the case of fifty-six thirty-three Botanical Ha, Botanical Avenue, uh, that, that geography is, uh, in a review district, so demolition permit, uh, gets routed to Culture Resources for evaluation, uh, and that evaluation is, uh, is based on the staff review of going out, studying the area, uh, and in this case, it's a, a property that's in, in, as you see here, it's going up, uh, in, in the Hill District, Hill neighborhood, and it's not in a designated historic district, it's in the Hill neighborhood, uh, you can see, it's, it's on a block, uh, with, with residential to the, to the east, and across January begins, uh, commercial, commercial, uh, looking directly east on Botanical, uh, you can see the, see both, the, the building there is a building that's under construction, in construction, uh, and you can also see the for sale sign or the development coming sign on, on the property itself, uh, this is a block that's varied in many ways, with big, little houses, uh, that new house that you saw under construction, uh, sort of small wood frame houses, uh, along it, on both sides of the street, along Botanical, but there are on the same block, uh, radically new houses, uh, maybe that's, certainly definitions that they are new, and you can see that the two that you see here are radically different from each other, and different from what the, of the, the current housing stock is, in some ways, so, uh, that is the, sort of the overall context of this particular block that this is on, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the demolition of the house that was asked for demolition, would be proposed to be replaced by a new house, a new construction, uh, subsequent new construction, is therefore a house, it's not a vacant lot, it's, uh, to be replaced with a new house. Uh, it's determined it was called a merit structure, uh, potentially contributing to a historic district, uh, but it's just, it is what it is, it has some unique architectural style, uh, but it's in this Preservation Review, not in the designated historic district, uh, and they have various criteria that they look at, includes whether it's a redevelopment plan at the moment, a neighborhood effect, subsequent new construction, remember you just saw in this piece, uh, that it's, uh, proposed to have a new house, as others have been doing that property, uh, and it's, uh, not necessarily commonly controlled by office. The presentation looked and can see that the neighborhood, you're not seeing vacant buildings in this, this neighborhood, uh, there are new construction, certainly some of houses are being reused, when you were, when you see the whole record, you see whether there was an economic hardship presented by the developer, uh, again, here is an example of, of different types of construction, new construction, uh, and it's a request for review on in that context.
With that, we'll entertain comments or conversation, Commissioner Braden?
So Jan, I have a question for you, so how is it that on the same block, there are so many new structures that have been built, and this particular one, I mean, were the other lots vacant, you think? Um, it just seems odd to me for somebody who's buying this, and they see all this going on, and they don't, we're not allowing them to build.
Well, this is actually a rather different structure, uh, it's older than most of the Hill properties, it was built in eighteen ninety-five, um, it has what they call a raised basement, I don't know if you could go back to it, but there are actually living space in the basement, uh, which is a traditional rural house type, but the staff felt that it qualifies for self-protection under the department's previous requirement.
Jan, are you saying it was designed that had living space in the basement?
Yes.
So could the property, the other one that got demolished before, or one of the other, just cut her house?
They were more of this small, little...
Let's be careful about that, in, in that, clearly, uh, on this block itself, there may have been a vacant block or two, but you have seen and noted that there have been lots with new construction, uh, some of them certainly involve tear downs from properties that were...
I'm not sure how you, I, I didn't follow how that was...
So what, what we're looking at is, we're looking at that block, you've seen that there's a lot of new construction?
Right.
As, as Commissioner Bradley points out, or asks about, many of those new housing properties were the subsequent new construction to a tear down.
Right, yes, and, and what, and I thought what she was saying is this is a higher merit building than some of this amazing...
It, it is what it is, uh, what was on the other properties were what they were, uh, but the block itself is not a designated historic district.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Peoples?
Nothing, I, I just, it's, it's a nice looking house, and, uh, it's beautiful.
Can I, is it condemned?
Not with data.
It's supposed to be stately, but it's not condemned.
One of the things I, I, why you've heard me talk about this, is that, uh, Preservation Review certainly has a look at the building itself, but it's not necessarily something you find on the title when you buy a property to know that it's administrative, because it's not.
Commissioner Banton?
Question?
Commissioner Collins? No questions.
Commissioner Boyd? Okay, there is, a gentleman wants to speak, keeping in mind, you cannot present anything that we have not discussed, and I don't know...
Well, I don't know a whole lot, I, I live on the house, my name's Chris Pagan, I'm a developer.
Okay, that's where I, I needed to hold to the line for a moment, are, are we able, David, are we able to...
Oh, I don't have to talk.
Oh, I just want to know that if we...
You can give it a standing up to the other party, so...
Okay, all right, nobody, okay, all right, with that, then I will entertain a motion to either to review, take up to review, or not take up to review.
I move that we review this one.
Okay, it's been moved, I hear a second?
That's it.
It's been moved a second, then we review, previous role, call for previous role, any objections?
Objection? Yep.
But, but you call, oh please, all, all of them, Boyd?
Nope. Commissioner Banton?
Nope.
Commissioner Boas?
No.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Conway?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
And Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Sheriff Strader?
Aye.
And Motion Patterson?
At that point, then it will come back to us, oh, yeah, it will come back to us a little bit, it comes back to us with the information that was presented to the Preservation Board, nothing new has been...
We just instructed staff of both, of the Preservation Board, to report all that documentation, and then we will distribute it to the parties, and we'll bring that report forward, and you'll review it.
And then they're assigned, and then...
Again, when it comes back, you can make the same decision, you can make a different decision that says it's allowed to be demolished, or we can modify it, but that will happen in a few minutes, okay?
Is that, are there any delegated items that need to be discussed?
No, no, but I do want to point out one thing, uh, that in the interest of understanding that, uh, we have upon occasion tabled items, uh, and sometimes it's a quick thing, something was amiss, and we took it up the next time, uh, but Alderman Boyd tabled an item, we're relating to a redevelopment plan a couple of weeks ago, uh, we decided that it's in the, it's in the interest of, of U.S. citizen volunteers, that we track that somehow, so you will see on this agenda that was handed out to that tonight, that we are, uh, including in that realm of the second page where it says delegated items, information items, items tabled at previous meetings, just so we have a record of that. We will be back... We will be back to you with a policy at some time to say something of a kind, like, if it stays on that list for five meetings or something, and it's not brought back to the table, uh, it expires. Uh, Almond Boyd had made the original motion to table it, and I understand you have no interest in bringing it up again tonight.
Correct.
So with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, enjoy your action, Mike.
Very good. Uh, following our calendar, our next meeting theoretically would be November the sixth at five thirty. Please put that on your calendar. Uh, our hope is that tomorrow we are celebrating another car's win, even though it is in Atlanta. Uh, again, to those who are our dear friends, we wish you a festive holiday. Sorry that we were not respectful and held a meeting on that this evening. I entertain a motion to, uh, in the meeting, so, is the move adjourned? A second? I mean, is the move adjourned? We are adjourned. Thank you.